Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order this regular meeting of the Boston Spa Central School District, Board of Education for March 20th. Can everyone please rise, join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'd like to welcome everyone who is here in person, welcome all of those who are watching on the live stream from home. In the event that we would have to evacuate this library here, there are two exits behind me in the corners that lead outside, and there is the exit into the hallway, the main entrance of the library. And again, welcome, everyone, and we're just gonna get right into it, we have recognition tonight.
Thank you, everyone, we have quite a bit of recognition tonight. First up, we have Mr. Dave Lotto, grant's chairperson, from the Boston Spa Education Foundation, please come on up.
Okay, so, sorry about my voice, my daughter decided to give me whatever virus she has, so, um, my name is David Lotto, and I am the co-chair of the Boston Spa Education Foundation Grant Committee, and a teacher myself. Since the, with the latest round of grants, the Boston Spa Education Foundation has since its inception in 1996 funded over $445,000 in enrichment grants to educators throughout the Boston Spa School District. And it is genuinely my pleasure to recognize a group of truly dedicated educators and administrators who the foundation is proud to have awarded a total of $9,388 for educational enrichment projects within the district during the 2024 grant cycle. I want to thank the Board of Education, as well as Superintendent of Schools, Dr. Duka, for the opportunity to be here tonight, and with other members of the foundation to recognize them. We awarded $200 for the Gateway Grind Coffee Cart to speech and language pathologist Erica Hoover for supplies and materials at Boston Spa Middle School. We awarded, oh, she's coming, oh, perfect. We awarded $1,600 to fund the purchase of four-spike Lego robotics kits for Mr. Eric Bursch's Earth Science and Astronomy classes at Boston Spa High School. We awarded $600 to second-grade teacher Stacy Waltz to help fund reading instruction in the second grade at Gordon Creek Elementary School. We awarded $1,284 to reading teacher Gina Ralston and fifth-grade teacher Carol DiGennaro to fund digital cameras for the Gordon Creek Elementary School Yearbook Club and miscellaneous classroom activities. We're excited to announce that we have made a donation of $2,100 to help offset college credit fees for students enrolled within the district spa academy, thanks to the hard work of our newest board member, high school assistant principal Scott Seldman. And our final grant was for a total of $3,604, given to Boston Spa High School physics teacher, James Poirier, for the purchasing of optics lab equipment to allow for the continuation of quality, hands-on learning for students in physics courses as the new New York State Science Learning Standards are implemented. And that final grant was given in the generous Fred Reiner's Memorial Grant Fund. Of course, the funding for these projects is only possible through the generous and continued donations of our faithful community. Thank you.
I just want to say again, it's always my pleasure, every year, twice a year, to talk about the Education Foundation and the incredible amounts of support that they provide our school community. Thank you so much again to the Education Foundation.
Next up, for recognition, we have the Boston Spa Elks Lodge 2619. Boston Spa Elks Lodge 2619 has once again donated $6,000 to support the Scottys Backpack Program. Their very generous annual donations have been integral to this program, in the supplies, the weekend meals, to students and families who may otherwise go without. Like many things, the cost of food for the backpacks has increased dramatically over the past two years, and regular sponsors like the Elks ensure the program can continue to benefit approximately 200 elementary students in our district. We thank the Elks for being a valued community partner, and tonight we have leading night Carol Turney, who will be tonight's recipient of recognition.
I really wasn't prepared to say or talk, but my daughter Kim's in charge of this program, and she couldn't be here tonight, she doesn't feel well. But our Elks Club, Elks Lodge continues to support the community, and we love to do this every year to make sure the kids have their food for the weekend. Thank you.
Next up, we have Mr. Lopez and the Boston Spa troupe, cast of Beauty and the Beast, to talk to us about this weekend's performance.
So, in front of you, we have a little bit more than our cast, we have over 80 students that are part of our production, and they're part of our pit, our crew, and our cast. As the director, I cannot do this alone, I wanted to just send out a special thanks to Mrs. Chamberlain is our music director, Mr. R. is our orchestra director, Mr. Gatz is our producer, Mr. Bailey and Mrs. Livingston are our tech directors, and Mrs. Kinney is our choreographer. They work endless hours to put on an amazing production. About 40 minutes ago, we finished up our final rehearsal, and it was just absolutely amazing. We hope to see you, and I have Roman Mangino here, who, if you know Roman, he does like to talk, and so, Roman, it's all yours.
I would just like to start off by saying thank you to the board for having us here, and so that we can present ourselves. So I would like to start off by introducing some of our principal cast members in order to get an understanding of who you're gonna be seeing up on the stage, and who's gonna be in the front, though everybody is incredibly talented. So, if you guys could please raise your hand when I call out your name, that would be great. We have Katie Bonanto playing Belle, we have Peter Hinkley playing The Beast, Andrew Brooks as Cogsworth, Fiona Hughes as Miss Potts, Keith Dubois as LaFou.
What's up?
And Ben Ferrara as Lumiere. Take it away, Ben.
And if you guys would like to come and show us a little bit of support, our opening night is tomorrow, and we have four other shows, so it's Saturday and Friday at 7:00, Saturday at 1:00 and Sunday at 1:00. So, if you guys can, we would love to have you. Thank you.
Thank you all.
You can buy tickets either at the door or online on the school website.
Our kids are pretty tired, they worked the past three nights, so we'd like to show you a little preview. Thank you. So thank you, we hope you support the arts here at Boston Spa, the kids have worked tremendously hard, thank you very much.
And finally, for recognition, I'd like to introduce our elect director, Mr. Dave Sunkis, and we'll be doing some winter sports recognition.
Good evening, everyone. Board, thank you for allowing us to come here and present our student athletes and teams that have had great success this winter. As always, we like to start out with the first part of student athlete, and that's student. So we had nine winter athletic teams qualify as New York State Scholar-Athlete Teams. We had 114 students with a combined GPA of 93.009. Our Girls Indoor Track Team had a GPA of 94.691. Our Boys Indoor Track Team had a GPA of 94.651. Our Girls Basketball Team had a GPA of 93.847. Our Boys Basketball Team had a GPA of 93.700. Our Girls Bowling Team had a GPA of 92.730. Our Boys Bowling Team had a GPA of 91.819. Our Boys Swim and Dive Team had a GPA of 93.954. Our Ice Hockey Team had a GPA of 90.890. And our Boys Alpine Ski Team had a GPA of 90.796. So, it goes without saying that we do put the student athlete, we put the student before the athlete here, which is something we pride ourselves on. Three years in a row, we've been a school of excellence in New York State, and hope to be again this year. We had three teams this year that had great success, and the first team I'm gonna call up is our Unified Bowling Team, Coach Rob Emel.
Hi, thanks for being here, thank you to Dr. Duka and the board for this recognition. I am Rob Emel, the Unified Bowling Coach. We did have a successful year, success is definitely measured by different things. With Unified Bowling, one of my favorite aspects of it is, it's the small celebrations, whether you get a strike, whether you win, get a spare, maybe even hit a pin, eat as many fries as you can, whatever it is. We celebrate all the successes, but we did a very nice job. This is our largest unified team we have in Boston Spa history, which was awesome. It was a little challenging, but with the lane availabilities and so many schools having unified bowling teams, organization was tough, but everybody kind of hung together, and even if they weren't bowling, they were cheering on other teams, or cheering on their teammates. It was a lot of fun. At championships, we stepped up. It was pretty wild and awesome to see, we had a lot of bowlers get personal bests, we had a bowler that never bowled 100, should bowl 103, 106, 109 in her three games, and we ended up winning our division and winning the section, which is pretty awesome, pretty incredible. There is a video here that kind of explains what we do, it's more fun to watch than me talking. I think it's queued up next.
I am Coach Emel, I am the head coach of the Unified Bowling Team here at Boston Spa.
My name is Natalie.
My name is Xavier.
I'm Dylan Waters.
I'm Alex Barnes.
I'm a Boston Spa Unified Bowler.
My ultimate goal with Unified Bowling is to provide an opportunity for students of all skills and ability levels, have a fun time, good time, teach them how to bowl, have them meet new people, and overall just have a great experience with bowling and with other students here at Boston Spa.
I've been on the team for like, three years, and I noticed that there have been very good people on the team, and awesome coaches.
I did it last year, it was quite fun, you get to chat with friends, hang out with friends, and also bowl at the same time.
It's my favorite season to coach. Unified Bowling is all about smiles and high fives, and just providing a fun experience.
I was nervous at first, but as soon as you get out there, I don't know, just a fun time.
It's pretty great, a lot of fun times, a lot of good memories being made here, a lot of good people.
Join Unified because it's fun, you meet new people, different cliques and different groups of friends get together and get to know new people, and their qualities, how they are, great personal skills, and like I said, overall, just a fun time.
If they like bowling, and they like chatting with friends after school, I'd recommend them to do that, and it's also a good way to just make your friends.
Be looking for something to do that's fun, something that's good, you know, get you out of the house a little bit, it's a good thing to do.
It's a good way to make friends and enjoy some good experiences while playing out there.
Yeah, so that's what Unified Bowling is. So what I noticed about all my Unified Seasons is strangers kind of come together for the couple months that it is, and now they're sitting together in the cafeteria, they're sitting together in study halls, they're high-fiving each other in the hallway, so it does unify the school building, and it's also cool to meet other teams from different schools. Like I said, we had a large team this year, I'm gonna announce everybody, even if they're not here, I know other sports and activities are going on right now, but just to give them some recognition. When you hear your name, come on up, get your certificate, and you can line up for a picture. Alex Barnes. Colin Casey. Matt Cook. PJ Cronin. Kate Fletcher. Kyle Gravelding. Bella Caldi. Christian Caldi. Kiri Kergel. Brayden Kershaw. Mia Legoy. Kaylee Lovless. Where's Kaylee? Lauren Lynch. Haley Masters. Nate McVeigh. Katie Miller. Liliana Moya Martinez. Mike Penfold. Sorry, bud. Matty Peroni. Matty. Brad Pingelski. Jacob Powell. Andrew Sakolish. Abby Ryan. Libby Ryan. Jesse Schaller. Natalie Simak. Nora Tallman. Xavier Tokos. Gary Totten. Ella Twist. Mark Vadnis. James Vogts. Dylan Waters. Bree Williams. Juliana Wiltse. And Ryan Vojkovic. I'd like to also thank my assistant coaches, Mike Fisher and Amy Wirt, for all their help. Great job, guys, let's hold this up proud. Hold that Christian? All right, you are champion Unified Bowling Team. Thank you. Can we cover up your Ithaca shirt, Matty?
Sure.
Parents, if you want to move up to get a better picture, you can, come on up.
Thanks, Colin. Raise it up tall, Christian, there you go. Congratulations, guys, thank you. Thank you for coming out.
Did you say, can I take that home with me? Go ahead. We'll get another one, don't worry about it. Again, Coach Emel, thank you for all your hard work with this. When I tell you that there's no better person, there's no better personality, someone that comes with energy, sometimes too much energy every day, Coach Emel really does a great job with these kids. The inclusion is outstanding, and Boston Spa was one of the first six schools that started Unified Bowling 14 years ago now. And now you see where we are and how many kids are involved, and when we first started, we had real trouble finding what we call partners, and now we have too many. We'll have to make cuts next year, maybe, we'll see. But again, thank you, Coach Emel, congratulations on your success. The next group is our Girls Indoor Track Team. I would sit here and start naming off all the new school records, but we would be here way too late. So I'm gonna ask Coach Priest and Coach Gurman to come up and highlight their season.
All right, we're just gonna call the team up here first, so we're gonna start with Gabby Boseth. Harriet Healy. Patrina Zee. Tatiana McCray. So I promise that I will make this as quick as possible, but when you start to hear what this team has accomplished, you'll start to see why I had to go on to slightly on to the back of a page. I have coached 20 years, this actually was my 36th season of coaching, and I can honestly say, it's not a lie, I've said it to the girls and boys, because they're gonna hear about them next. This is by far the most successful team or season I've ever had in those 36 seasons. So we had to go back, and I'm not exaggerating, as a math teacher, I literally lost count of the records broken. If you talk about just the actual records broken, we broke 13 of them this season. If you talk about the fact that they broke their own record literally every time they stepped on a new track, it was 29 school records this season. So, I won't bore you with the details, but basically, if you can imagine every sprinting event we have possible, and a couple distance races, they broke them. I want to talk about the Section 2 leaderboard. For those of you that aren't familiar with our area, we are widely known across the state, and actually nationally known, as the top-ranked section, not only in the state, but in the entire country. So when I say they... When I say they're running against the best, I literally mean they're running against the best. So in our Section 2 leaderboard, this is anyone that competes for Section 2, we had the top two girl athletes in the 55-meter and 60-meter dash. We went number 1, 3, 4, and 9 in the 200. We went number 2 and 3 in the 300. We went second in the 400 and the 500. We went fifth in the 600. We went fifth in the 800. We were fourth in the 200 hurdles. We were second in the SMR, the first time they ever ran together as a team, and they were first, the fastest team in Section 2 for the 4x2. Then we had some individual, really, really big highlights. We went to the Springfield Envy, and Harriet Healy not only set a personal best for the season, she actually broke the meet record at the complex in the 300-meter dash. Our Girls Sprint Medley Relay that you see right here, they also run the 4x2, they are now the fourth fastest in Section 2 history all time. And then Patrina and Gabby are the fourth and fifth fastest respectively, and the 60-meter all time in Section 2. You can see the pattern here, this same group of four girls are now the second fastest 4x2 girls team to ever compete in Section 2, and that is by .35 seconds. I'm only gonna talk about the state meet and beyond, because the regular season was also very successful, but we would be here a really long time, so just talking about the state meet and beyond. We had five athletes attend. For the girl's side, we had Harriet, who came in seventh in all of New York State in the 300. Gabby placed fifth in New York State for the 300. And Patrina ran a great PR and came in... And Patrina ran a great PR and came in 4th place in New York State for the 55 meter dash. Then including the boys team, we had seven of those athletes also qualified to run New Balance Nationals in Boston. And just to give you an idea, they qualified for 10 events at Nationals. We had Kim, who was not here today, but one of our 8th graders qualified and competed in the 60 meter dash. And then we had Tatiana qualified for both the 4x2 and SMR. Patrina qualified for the 60 meter dash, also the 4x2 relay and the SMR. Gabby qualified and ran, which is a very hard thing to do in all four of her events. She ran the 60 meter, the 200 meter, the 4x200 meter, and the 400 leg of the sprint medley relay. Harriet also qualified for four events, she also ran the 200 meter, I'm sorry, she ran the 400 meter, the 4x2, qualified in the 200, and ran the 800 leg of our sprint medley relay. And then came the big highlight. This girls team, unfortunately, we had one person who was sick when we ran the relay the first time in Springfield. And just to give you an idea of how elite these girls are, the first time we ran it, we broke the school record, which was awesome. And then the first time this group ran it together, they broke that school record by 13 seconds. They also came in 17th in the country at Nationals. And if that wasn't enough, we were also one of the best, in our opinion, the best 4x2 in the country. They are not only great kids, but they are not only great athletes, but they're great kids, they're fun to work with, they're fun to coach. This girls team you see in front of you, came in 11th place in the nation for the 4x200 meter dash relay. So congratulations guys. Parents, you wanna sag some pictures or wait till we have everybody, it's up to you guys. Pictures, alright, pictures. Coach says take pictures. I'd like to call up our two boys that are also being recognized, we have Devon Hemraj and Kalai Makonani. Alright, so much like the girls, we had an amazing season with the boys. Again, competing against the best athletes and runners you're gonna see pretty much anywhere in the state and beyond, as we proved when we went to Nationals. So again, they were included in those records that we broke. Again, pretty much every sprint that they have, we had someone break it multiple times. I actually walked in and Stuart Williams said to me, "Yeah, I tried to keep up on your records, but by the time I posted it, you already ran somewhere else and broke the next record." So I kinda gave up. You wanna do this?
No.
Okay. Great team right here. On the Section 2 leaderboard, again, we're against the best in the entire state. We were 3rd and 4th in the 200 meter dash. We are 2nd in the 300 meter dash, 2nd in the 55 hurdles, and 2nd in the 60 meter hurdles. It's just amazing to watch these guys come to practice every day, work really hard, and then go to these really big meets and achieve these personal bests. And just the quality that we see is astounding. As far, as far as our highlights, we had, again, five athletes attend the New York State Championship Meet. Devon and Kalai were part of that group. Devon was 16th in the 55 meter hurdles in New York State, and he has only been hurdling for two seasons. He did indoor and outdoor. And then basically I started with him, no, I'm sorry, outdoor and indoor, so really, that was a huge deal for someone with that little time. So we have big plans for this outdoor season. Kalai was also at the New York State Meet, and he came in 5th for the 300 meter dash in all of New York State. It was 16th Federation, it was 13th for public schools, because Federation includes public and private. They know their stats. That's right. These two also qualified for Nationals, and then they got to go and literally run against the best in the country. It was amazing to see them, they got to go to the Reggie Lewis Center down in Boston and see them run against the best of the best. Kalai qualified in the 200 meter and competed, and Devon was in the 60 meter hurdles. Both had really good days. I think they have a lot more to come, because you're looking at two juniors, so we're not losing either of them to graduation, which is huge, when you hear the list of accomplishments that they have. Kalai also literally sent me a message and said, "Hey Coach, I'm gonna be going to Virginia." And coincidentally, Adidas Nationals are there. So once again, he ran an extra meet at Adidas Nationals, because why not qualify for two national meets? He broke his own school record by over a quarter of a second, which when you're only talking about 22 seconds is a really big deal. So congratulations to both of these young men. Yep, we're gonna do some pictures. I didn't start with it, I should've, I just want to thank the board, I want to thank Superintendent Dr. Duca, Dave Sunkis, for the opportunity to coach here. And I really want to thank Coach Priest, he does a lot of work behind the scenes. The reason that these athletes got to go to these big meets was a lot of legwork that he puts in. We took them to multiple meets in New York City, Staten Island, and then eventually all the way to Boston for New Balance Nationals. And that wouldn't be possible without him putting in a lot of work to get them in those meets. So I just want to thank those people as well.
As you can see, that is quite the accomplishment. Coach Gorman loves his stats, in case anybody was wondering, in case anybody fell asleep So there's a saying that goes in athletics, you never want to follow the GOAT, the greatest of all time. You never want to follow the guy that's, Nick Saban, you don't want to be the coach after Nick Saban. Our wrestling program here, for, I've been here for 23 years, has always been a top 3, 4 program in the section and the state. And we had a coach here that was the GOAT. And Coach Stalters created a program and a culture in that room that resonates beyond him, being here as a coach. So Coach Warren came in, new teacher, new coach, took on the challenge, and just decided to win a sectional championship, just because he thought it'd be fun. So let's call Coach Warren and the, his assistant coach, and present the varsity wrestling team.
Thank you to the board for allowing us to be here tonight. It's a great honor, like Coach, Mr. Sunkis just said, my first year, it's a pretty good one. And, you know, Mr. Sunkis talked to me today, and he said, "It's like a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity to be able to do this." And I said, "No, I'm gonna make a habit of it, and we're gonna, we're gonna keep coming back for this, so expect me here next year, hopefully." First off, like everyone else, I'm gonna bring everybody up here, we don't have everyone here, but I'll still announce their names, and we'll, we'll go from there. So we have freshman James Capasso. Junior Cole Donnelly. Junior Max Kinsey. Junior Ben Livingston. Senior Jacob Perkins. Freshman Quentin Wolikowski. And then who we don't have in attendance right now is Junior Mia Collins. Freshman Liam Collins. Junior Mason Insonia. Senior Ralph Keeney. Junior Billy O'Connor. Sophomore Angus Page. Sophomore Sean Pozley. Sophomore Tyler Perkins. And sophomore Jacob Thomas. So as you can probably tell by that, we have a very, very young group. We had, we had two seniors this year that were able to compete, one senior got injured early, and that kinda started off our season as it went. We had a lot of injuries to, to begin, a lot of sickness, and then there was a new thing that a lot of you don't really understand wrestling, I don't, I don't know, but there's a new weight loss plan that came into effect this year, and it was new for everyone, but that really messed with us for the beginning. You know, so for our first, I think, 10 duels, we forfeited three weight classes, and out of, we have 13 weights, that's a lot, that's 18 points we give up right there. So a lot of our duel mates, we struggled with those, but I kept believing, once we had a healthy team, we were gonna be the team to beat. And then we get into the postseason finally, we actually have our full strength lineup. And at the Class 8 tournament, we placed 11 wrestlers, and qualified 11 to the Section 2 tournament, the state qualifiers. And then at that tournament, we had two champions, two 3rd, one 4th. We had, I'm going off the top of my head right now, two 5th. Two 5th and, and one 6th. And, and one 2nd, I forgot about Cole, sorry Cole. But out of our, those top guys, only two of them were seniors. So thankfully we got seniors to end on a good note, with two of our 3rd place guys were, were freshmen. Our sectional, one of our sectional champs was a junior who started out as a 6 seed, and then ended up in, going on a tear and winning the whole tournament and qualifying for states. Junior Cole Donnelly, who took 2nd in the section, he had, went last year as the 7 and 14 record, and he ended with a 21 and 11 record and a Section 2 finalist, and qualified for state, so that's pretty impressive. We have a really good core group of guys that I'm really excited for, and like I said earlier, I expect to be back here next year, and hopefully we have an extra Section 2 champion added on to our list. So our Section 2 champion wrestling team here.
I know that that is a kind of a lengthy report, but if you look through, through my lens, that's, that's a good thing. So, you know, and we can't do this without the dedication that our coaches have. Coach Warren mentioned, he called me today, and he had a death in the family. And, you know, I said to him, my exact words, "As a friend, I want you to, I want to tell you, go do what you gotta do. But as your boss, you may not get this opportunity every year." So, he said he'll make it work, and that just shows the dedication. And we can't do what we do without the support of the board, Dr. Duca, our fields, our facilities, the ability for us to take trips that a lot of schools can't take, that we challenge our kids with. That is really what has started to set us apart from, from other schools. Years ago, we would struggle in the suburban council, and that's not the case anymore. We compete at the highest level in the majority of our sports, and that's a true devotion to our coaches, our, our athletes, and all of you sitting here, so thank you.
Is that it for recognition?
That concludes recognition.
Okay. And thank you again, Mr. Sunkis, it's a tribute to your work as leading our athletic teams here, so thank you. Alright, next on our agenda is public comment. Do we have anyone signed up for public comment? Thank you. As I always do, I'm gonna read our guidance on public comment. The Board of Education welcomes district residents, parents, and other interested persons to its meeting. Community involvement at board meetings is encouraged, so that the board can better understand and represent the views of its constituents. Please be aware, however, that information such as individual student information or particular personal issues cannot be discussed at public sessions of the board. Speakers will be called upon individually, when recognized by the board president, will be asked to approach the podium and state your name and residence. Statements are restricted to a maximum of two minutes, and speakers will be notified by the board president when his or her time expires. The board and the district staff take public comment very seriously, however, the board will not respond to comments or questions during the public comment period. Board asks the public's cooperation in maintaining a safe and respectful environment, and the board president reserves the right to limit individual comments if it is deemed necessary. And to achieve this, speakers will not make slanderous attacks on any group, organization, or individual, a member of the board, an employee of the district, a member of the audience, or a member of the public, use profane, vulgar, threatening, or disparaging language, or racial or ethnic slurs, or disrupt the meeting with loud outbursts, or any other disruptive conduct or behavior, either during the speaker's assigned time, or at any other time during the meeting. Speakers understand that a failure to comply with these rules for maintaining a respectful and productive environment may result in early termination of the speaker's allotted time, a denial of future requests to speak, and any other actions deemed necessary by the president of the board, or where appropriate in matters of health or safety, the superintendent of schools. And so, Mayor Rossi, would you please approach the podium?
Did I really force you to read that whole thing as the only speaker, I think? Frank Rossi Jr., 63B Saratoga Avenue, Ballston Spa. First off, Jason, to you and your family, thank you for the donation you made toward the St. Baldrick's event on Saturday. My numbers paled in comparison to the Malta Avenue team, $10,000, I think it was, that they raised of the 30-plus thousand dollars toward children, or childhood cancer especially. It was just amazing, so thank you to you and your family for your donation on my team. Want to say that tomorrow night, I'm excited to go to Beauty and the Beast, because it's my first break really after doing our budget. Good luck Superintendent, on getting yours finished up soon. But a tentative budget is always a good learning experience for everybody. Wanted to just remind everybody here of something that I posted last week, that there is a cannabis dispensary that has applied, or applicant that would like to locate one where Russell's Deli is located currently. We have a 30-day window to give comments generally about the location and/or the potential operator. I plan on using some of this period of time to get the comments of people in our community, including anybody that wants to, from the school district or school board, if there's anything you would like to include, feel free to. I will package it up, summarize it to the state, and, you know, make sure that the best location is being picked, if one is going to be picked for the Village of Ballston Spa, and that the best possible operator is in that position as well. Because obviously, there's a lot of gravity behind the situation, like a cannabis dispensary, much like a bar, liquor store, or another, let's say, interesting stores that can pop up throughout communities like ours. But our village did not opt out in 2021, which was the deadline to do so for dispensaries and for lounges, and so there's nothing we can do per se to stop a cannabis dispensary from locating in the village. It's just a question of now, doing the right thing, giving it its full review, et cetera. I know that it can affect the school district, so we just want to make sure we're doing the right things. Finally, I want to thank Principal Robinson for including me in the stakeholders group that has been meeting here in the high school, to talk about how the high school's operating, ideas he has bouncing off of us, and whatnot. I bounced off the idea of having some banners in our community, again, dedicated toward the high school, to celebrate the achievements, not just athletically, but academically as well, and something to look at. And just final thought briefly if I may, that having all the sports teams here is always... And just a final thought briefly, if I may, that having all the sports teams here is always a big thing because, as you know, I'm highly involved in Division III athletics nationally. And Ballston Spa has a name out there because of the student athletes, many of whom we see here tonight and in the past, that has just exemplified the spirit here of Scotty's and, you know, just what we're all about around here. Our names are inextricably linked. I said it the first time I ever spoke to you, because of the school district being Ballston Spa and the village being Ballston Spa, we may not be the same, but we are basically when it comes to people identifying with Ballston Spa. And so I would love to include a sign, a Welcome to Village Ballston Spa sign, that says essentially the accomplishments of state and national championships that our village student athletes have attained, or our school district's student athletes have attained. Because Ballston's got two school districts in it, and, you know, the village at least is the primary. So we would like to invite you to maybe bring some ideas to us on how we can effectively do that, the wording, et cetera. Let's celebrate more of what we just saw here earlier tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor Rossi, for your comments. And we very much appreciate the partnership and the consideration that the village gives our school district. And we certainly hope to reciprocate and also always consider the village and our, our surrounding towns that make up our school district in all of our actions. Thank you. Student Government Report. Kate?
Hello, everyone. Happy Spring. We had a successful health and wellness fair. Thank you to many individuals and groups who donated their time and resources for the event. The music department's pop concert was a great success, raising over two thousand dollars for seniors. Our biggest concert was followed by a music tour to our elementary schools that included the chamber orchestra, festival choir, and jazz band. Congratulations to the robotics team for winning the creativity award this past weekend at the Finger Lakes Competition, and good luck this weekend. As you can see by tonight's preview of Beauty and the Beast, the student body is very excited for the musical. We hope to see you at one of the five shows. Lastly, spring sports are off to a great start, and congratulations to all of our winter athletes on a successful conclusion of your season. Thank you, and have a wonderful break.
Thank you. Any questions for our student government? Thank you very much for the report, and you may excuse yourself. I have a motion to approve the minutes for the March 6, 2024 regular meeting. Any amendments or additions? Not hearing any. All those in favor? I opposed. Abstentions. Minutes are approved. Our superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Ferno. We have two reports tonight. Our first report, I'd like to welcome Ms. Mottler and Ms. Poussetier up from our Professional Development Committee for an update on the work that this committee has been doing all year.
So, good evening, Dr. Duca and members of the board. Thank you for having us back again this year. We were here at the same time last year to report our work that we had done by this time last year. So we're just going to run through a little bit of the work that we've been doing this year. Every presentation that we do, whether it is here, or we present at faculty meetings a lot as well, we always start with this slide. And as I said last year, it is to thank these committee members. We would never accomplish the amount of work that we accomplish in a year if we did not have this group of people who are volunteers. They are volunteer educators who believe in this work. If we did not have this group, we would never be able to pull a lot of this off. So I'll start by talking about our, I think the biggest accomplishment this year was the October 20th Superintendent's Conference Day. We had not had a day like this in, Kim and I were talking about it, maybe fifteen or sixteen years. And even when we did, it wasn't really a day like, like this. We had fifty-four offerings that day. Six hundred and twenty employees came to those professional development sessions. All of the offerings fell under these five areas. Noteworthy is only two presenters were outside presenters that we brought in. And all of the other sessions were created by and facilitated by all of our own staff members. You know, the, the talent that is in this district and the expertise that people have that we never knew really made this day what it was. We surveyed staff after, so you see a couple of the little testimonial comments that are in italics. I won't read them. But we, we, we put out a survey to staff. Eighty-nine percent of staff said that all of the sessions they attended fully met their professional development needs that day. So, and then people said, you know, things like, like this. I look at this, this is my favorite slide of, of tonight. One, because whoever made this comment, and they were anonymous, noticed that all of the presenters were all of their colleagues, and then also noticed that it's super cost-effective. So six hundred and twenty people were able to come to a full-day conference like this for six thousand dollars. That's like between nine and ten bucks a person. You can't go outside of the district and, and have a day like this, or be part of a day like this, for under probably a hundred and fifty dollars. So, and I was telling Dr. Duca this earlier today, and I said, Brian will be logically thinking, that's not true, it's not nine dollars, we're still paying their daily rate, so... But I'm ignoring that, and I'm celebrating our nine-dollar-a-person day. So, anyway, it was a great day. We're planning a day next year. It will be November 1st, because I, we love our teachers, and it's the day after Halloween. So the kids will, will not be here eating candy all day, that day. We'll just run through just a couple of our subcommittee updates. This is one of them. It's the new employee orientation onboarding program. This committee has oversight of the three orientation days in August. Not only do they build the days, this subcommittee facilitates those three days. The annual professional performance review offerings, and I think we've had probably over ten of them this year. These are sessions for new teachers on the Danielson rubric. And the Danielson rubric is, that framework is what we use to evaluate our teachers when we observe them. So this group, you know, runs those. Elementary curriculum residency, Kathleen Skelly and her team, I, I give full credit for this. This is elementary level. First-year teachers get four half-days release time to work with Kathleen and her team. Second-year teachers get two half-days to work with her and her team. And it is, it is really, really well-received. Our mentor coordinators partner with this subcommittee. And over time, I think probably over four years' time, we've created sort of a tiered professional development for new teachers in the mentor program. In our district, you are in that mentoring program for three years. It doesn't matter if you're an eight-year veteran, you, you didn't spend eight years here, so... But we have a differentiated approach because a first-year teacher doesn't necessarily now need exactly what a, a third-year teacher in the program would need. So that's that committee. I'll let Kim talk about a couple of more, and then a sneak peek at next year.
I'll let you do it. So our second subcommittee is our professional development to improve professional practice. So research shows that positive conditions for learning contribute to students being engaged and attending school regularly. In addition, research indicates that strong relationships with adults is the biggest predictor of good attendance. As a result, we developed the strengthening positive conditions for learning series. And we have three areas within that series. The first is classroom protocols. To highlight a few examples of things we've offered, it includes fostering inclusive learning environments, grading for success, managing challenging and disruptive behaviors, maximizing group work, and cooperative learning. Our second, instructional strategies is our second category. And some, to highlight a few workshops, building success through formative assessment, differentiating the content, process, product, and/or environment, identifying the essential components to gauge student success, interactive learning strategies, and summarization for student success. And our third area is student and staff wellness. To highlight some examples of workshops, bringing nature into the classroom, building classroom community and making connections, chair yoga, incorporating brain breaks, mindfulness for physical well-being, and the rise of anxiety in youth. Our third subcommittee is professional learning communities, or commonly known as PLCs. Displayed are what we offered this year. So staff propose the topics, and participants join a PLC that best fits their needs. These are, you know, events on time, or that, these are usually generally well-attended. And in some cases, you know, they, a PLC could last two or three years based on the needs of the group. Our fourth subcommittee is our book studies, research, and review team. In a book study, participants read a common text and then reflect on the reading, considering how, using the content knowledge applies, the content gained, applies to their practice, and consider possible implementation ideas. Again, staff propose the topics or the titles of a potential book study, and participants join a book study that best suits their needs, and displayed are what we offered this year, to date. This year, we partnered with the Building Better Futures LLC. This is the first time in my career we've done anything like this. And this has been an opportunity for both parents and staff to attend a series of virtual presentations. As you can see, these topics are very timely and relevant. These have been really well-received, and there's been high participation. As Pam mentioned, we are planning our Spring Superintendent's Conference Day, so we do appreciate the opportunity, the format of the day. So in the morning, we'll start with choice sessions. Participants have an options of thirty-three different choices, thirty-one of which are all presented again by our staff members. And then the afternoon, we divide it into an opportunity for collaboration. This could be teachers working as a co-teaching partnership. It could be a grade-level department, whatever they need. And then it also allows us to complete the mandatory training related to violence in the workplace. Looking ahead to next year, we will continue to refine and enhance our new employee orientation and onboarding program. We'll have two professional learning series next year. We'll continue our strengthening positive conditions for learning, as well as add diversity, equity, and inclusion. And as Pam mentioned, we'll also be busy working on our November, November 1 Superintendent's Conference Day. Any questions?
In your book studies, what's the average size of a book, for a book study?
We like to keep it a ratio of one, of fifteen to one. One facilitator with fifteen participants. If we go over ten, we typically add a second facilitator, and then we'll increase the size.
And do you see the same people coming back over and over to participate with different books? Like, you know, they're just, or do you see just more randomized?
You do, you do.
We see some new folks too.
It depends on the nature of the books. If it's more content-driven, you see, you know, for instance, we've been doing a couple of series related to math, so you see more math-oriented people. Like, a lot with the social-emotional learning-type-related books, you get a greater diversity. But it, you know, you always, there's always typically a repeat, but there's also new people as well.
I just also want to say that I really appreciate that this district doesn't just take the time to use professional development for department meeting time to push, you know, the newest hottest topic out there. You really let the faculty choose what they want to do, and, and really let them have a voice and be a part of the committee as well. I think that's really valuable, and it's really important to the district, and I really appreciate it.
Thank you. Like, most of our professional development, we give them, like, areas of focus, and then we send out a survey with proposals. Anybody can submit a proposal, either to facilitate, or then we work to find somebody else.
We go through their descriptions, and, and, you know, they also have to have a pretty good knowledge base, and, and they prove that over time before we, we give them a session, you know, or a room full of twenty people.
I think it's important for people who don't know that, to understand that that is not the norm. This is, Ballston Spa is going above and beyond, and really letting the faculty, you know, help facilitate what they feel is important to develop. And I think that's really important for you guys to, you know, make sure that you promote when you, when you say that, because that is not the norm when you go to other districts. Usually, the administration is pushing an agenda, and you're not doing that here, and I, I value that. That's very important.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Ferno?
My question is, the parents as partners, what's the, how was the attendance spend?
It was good, good.
It was good, yeah. We offered, you know, like, a viewing of it, and so some people attend the viewing. And then it's offered for thirty days. It's open. And we have, our staff members were able to utilize that thirty days to view the, the session whenever they wanted.
Yes, you know, once again, thank you for the Superintendent's Day. Last November, I was able to attend some sessions. And, of course, it was my first one. I'm not an educator. And I asked, so is this how it normally goes? Like, no, this is completely different than how it normally is. A lot of positive feedback. One of the things, and I think I saw it in their, like, Digital Detective, which I thought was a very good topic, with you get all this information online, and how do you know fact from fiction? And what steps can you do to then fact-check yourself, right? So I would definitely recommend that for any future, recommend, courses, because I found that very useful for anyone who's got Facebook.
We'll tell her she has to do it again? Yes.
Yeah.
Holly, did you have something?
And I just wanted to add that I've had the, the pleasure of attending the, the summer orientation sessions. Happened right before our school year starts. And it's just incredible how there's an immediate focus on, you know, the work to be done, the professionalism of the district. And I think as a first impression, you know, for people coming in, it, it just is such a great reflection on our, our school district. So I want to thank you, and I also want to just say how appreciative we are of the partnership between all the various constituencies within our school district. And I, I see Ms. McGowan is here. I want to recognize her. And the ATA is certainly part of this as well. And, you know, seeing all those groups coming together because they're invested in our district. And again, there's just that focus on professionalism, and it comes from the, the onboarding of people here in our district, and then continues with the, the events like we're talking about here. So this is wonderful. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'd just say one, one thing as well. I just want to recognize the amount of time. They, they'll shortchange it. They put a lot of time, a lot of hours per week, per month with professional development in this district, and it doesn't go unnoticed. So thank you both.
And just seeing how many names are on that committee is really, really amazing.
In our next presentation, we have Mr. Siriani here to talk about the next budget review.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening, Brian.
Tonight, I was hoping that we would have a, a better picture of where the state budget was going, but it appears that, you know, things are not moving along very quickly. But from the outside, that may not be true. We don't know. The, the Senate and the Assembly one-house budgets are very similar when it comes to school aid. And that's good news, but apparently, you know, the governor's office is, is quite a ways away from that relative to additional aid for school districts. Just so everyone knows, that the, the one-house budgets included a three percent... included a three percent increase for school districts. And the governors, not only, there was no increase in that sense, guaranteed increase, but the Save Harmless was rolled back, and their school districts said, you know, quite frankly, are in a lot more difficult situation than we are. We were basically level for foundation aid, but many school districts have lost millions if the, the current proposal goes through. I don't believe that it will, because it would be devastating for many districts. Even wealthy school districts are, are finding themselves in very difficult situations. So we'll see how this plays out. Because of that, we're, we're spending a lot more time with the budget this year. And I'll talk about that in a second. Let's do that right now, in fact. Normally, we would be going over the instructional section of the budget, which is essentially three-quarters of the budget. But we're right now in the, in the process of, I, I wrote a conducting comprehensive program review. And the superintendent and the program and operation superintendent, assistant superintendent are working with all the administrators to review all the programs in the district to see what, what is effective and cost-effective and also, and, you know, what isn't, and how that will all play out. Because there will need to be cuts in, in general, you know, regardless of where the aid comes through. We'll just have to see how that plays out. We would be in much better shape if we weren't losing, you know, over eight hundred thousand dollars in global aid or global pilot payments. That really puts us behind every year, and we've been doing that for a decade now. But I'm going to talk about that, because there's good news coming. I hope that everyone is aware of that. So what I'm going to do is I'll talk about a few other items that are important that are, are coming up on the agenda, for example, and that is the propositions. So tonight, the board will be voting to approve propositions for school vehicles, the bus lifts, and the public library. And I'll talk about each of the, the first two. But just, I'll, I'll jump to the public library, because there's not much to say there other than we've been doing this, I don't know, thirty, forty years at this district. And this is an obligation for a school district. If a public library who is so situated requests it, then the, the school district is obligated to, you know, collect the tax that they request. So that's a very simple thing. We collect that, and then we, and we send that to them. First proposition, school vehicles. So that's going to be five seventy-two passenger buses and three maintenance vehicles. And it's important to note that the district is not purchasing any electric buses in this round of purchases. You know, some school districts are, some school districts aren't. It's all over the place. The, you know, given the state's difficulty to, you know, manage the foundation aid issue, it's, it's just astounding that they're moving forward with this issue. But I, I'll be honest with you, I think it's going to keep going. I, I thought, you know, six months ago that it wasn't going to keep moving, but I believe that it is. And so eventually, and in fact, next year, if it continues, we will need to buy some school vehicle, electric vehicles, maybe just one or two, because it fully kicks in in 2027. But we'll need to buy some to basically get used to them, plan out our, our facilities. And also, it allows us to access some rebates and some grant money that apply to things related to studies and analysis. And, and until you have a bus, electric bus, you're not able to do that. So we're going to have to go forward with that if, if it plays out the way that it is. We'll see. There are proposals to change, for example. The proposal was to spread the cost of these buses over twelve years. You know, to keep a bus for twelve years is very difficult. And that was a change in the governor's proposal, you know, imposing the, the mandate and then spreading the cost over a longer period of time that they'll pay you back for it. Just really difficult financially. So we'll see how that plays out. But, you know, seventy-two passenger buses are a little bit large for us. We, we have been buying sixty-eight passenger buses. But these are all coming up. They're, they're probably ten years old. And they are helpful, because we have a mix. It's not like we have all of one type of bus. In this case, we put these on routes where you have more kids, that the route is longer. And we're actually trying, and, and not trying, just trying, but have accomplished consolidation of routes this year so that we have less routes, because we have less drivers. It, it puts kids on the bus a little longer, but we try to minimize that. We're not keeping kids on the bus any longer than we have to. But the seventy-two passenger buses give that ability. They also allow us, they're important for our sports teams, because several of these, three, I believe, out of the five, actually have the extra storage on the bottom of the bus for all of the athletic equipment and stuff. And so this is again why, you know, you have this mix. And I think our bus garage does a great job of, you know, only buying what we need and when we need it. Three maintenance vehicles are classic stuff. One is a, a, a big truck, plow truck and sander and all that for our parking lots. We do all of our own unless there's an emergency. If it's something really huge, then we do have contractors on call. And a couple of our maintenance vans. And these are for our maintenance guys who are specialists in HVAC, plumbing, electrical. We don't have a lot of storage in the district for this type of stuff. So what we do is we have these vans, you know, basically kitted out and ready to go so that they have all the plumbing and stuff that they would want in there. And then they drive and they go to the school facilities and, and do their work. So that's with replacement, a couple of those. Those date from 2013, I believe. So moving on to bus lifts. Now, this is different. We haven't done this. I look back, and, and so it's going to be new to this board. But back in 2011 and prior to that, and when I got here in 2005, it was a regular occurrence that there would be a separate proposition on the May vote for anywhere from a half a million to a million and a half dollars. And, and this was a great practice, I thought, when I got here. Because what it did is, is it, it didn't push off lar, everything into big, large projects that then things became kind of a crisis. And, and instead, the smaller things that could be done and needed to be done were done on this, this interval. But then, with the large projects that we did do over the last few years, our last decade and a half, they became unnecessary, because things were rolled into those big projects. But we're back to this, and, and this, this issue right here is a big one. The, these very large lifts that you see here, they're both twenty, over twenty years old now. And they are causing all kinds of trouble. They don't want to work anymore. I guess, I wish I could stop after twenty years, but they've decided that they're done. And it, it is, it is quite a task. The, the normal buses that we have now, this is a, this is a sixty-eight passenger bus. They weigh about seventeen, eighteen thousand pounds. We know that we're going to see buses with the electric buses of over thirty-six thousand pounds, maybe even forty or more, when we get to those electric buses. And these are rated capacity of sixty-four thousand pounds. So the, the, another great part of this is that they can be done in place during the, the school year so we can get this done right away. And why is it so important? Is because right now, one of them won't even move and is set in place. And the other one, if it goes down, we have multiple buses that we can't lift. So this has to be done. And our, our, our review of projects said, this, this can't wait another year for our big project. And because after that, then it's even time after that to do it. This can be done right away. It's, it's, it's expensive, because one is, is the size and the, and the safety features associated with these. But also, the, this includes the removal, you know, jackhammering into this concrete floor that you see here, removing the old buses, being prepared for any kind of remediation needed for oil, soil contamination, et cetera, and then installing the new buses, or, or, there's new lifts, excuse me. But this can actually be done one at a time and will be during the school year. So we'll do that, yes. The, each one has two pistons. Okay, so there's two lifts. And they're right by, the other one is literally, if you, if you're standing, and where I was standing was where the other lift is. That's the one that doesn't move anymore. They actually, and not that we're going to get, I don't want to give too much, you know, for everyone here. But these, these things right here, you see this right here. This can move. And that allows it to, like, put the jack under the axle of a shorter bus or a longer bus. And this right here is a vital part of this, because otherwise, you can't adjust. Well, like I said, one of them, you know, they can get it to move if they go down in. And I, I looked into the, looked down in there. It's, it's quite a rusty old mess. They can do it, but it, it's, it takes them hours to try and move this track. So, you know, without, you know, too much detail here, you know, obviously, it's a big deal. They're needed for the new buses anyways that we're going to. So we need to do it now, and that's why it's proposed, okay? Now, I'm going to skip to student enrollment. It's something that we don't usually talk about, but we need to kind of talk about as we go into this year's budget. This is a graph going back to, to 2008. I hope that that's readable over there on the left. We had in-district four hundred, or four thousand, four hundred and nine students. And over time, we're down now to right here, to three thousand, eight hundred and sixty. And this, this is in-district, but there are only about thirty, it varies of thirty, special education students that are out of district in that sense. So that's the vast majority of the students. And you can see that slow progression that has gone on over, you know, more than a, a decade here. But what I want to point out is this right here. And if everybody remembers, this is when the Global Foundries Plant was built and came online. And we saw a quick jump right there of students. And, you know, it's like a hundred and fifty students approximately. That was interesting. We, we expected more at the time, and we didn't really get them. We know that some of the students are in Shen, some of the students are in Saratoga Springs, some of them are in Stillwater, Mechanic Field, et cetera. But we didn't get as many as we thought, but we certainly, it, it impacted us. And I expect that when they build the new plant, which I'm going to talk about next, that we're going to see another jump up here. How big it'll be, I don't know. We thought one way, but, you know, even our folks at the, the Capitol District Planning Commissioner, it's hard to judge where people will choose. One of the issues is, is where is the available housing? In today's market, you know, back in 2011, there was, the housing stock was very large. Today, it is very limited, and there's got to be houses available to move into. That's why we're seeing so many apartment complexes being built in the area, literally hundreds and hundreds of units. And that's kind of taking up the slack because of the lack of physical houses. So we'll see how that plays out. What is, what does this mean? So as everyone knows, the, the Global Foundries has received the, you know, multi-billion dollar, you know, subsidies from the state and federal government. And they plan to move forward. You know, different stories are that it should start this spring, all right? So what does the district get out of that? The district starts to get, every year, some piece of that construction as it's partially assessed as the building goes up. So that, that took about three years back in 2011, and it'll take probably about the same amount of time, unless there's a new process for them. We don't know much about what they, or how they do it. We're kind of looking in from the outside. But clearly, a new factory is coming. And that's great news for our pilot payment revenue. So as I mentioned, we're losing about eight hundred thousand dollars this year that we're in, and we're projected to lose another four hundred thousand next year. This, depending on how quickly it gets built, can dramatically increase. And it can be, you know, it might be a few hundred thousand in the first year or second year, but it'll, it'll grow into the millions like it did before. So that will offset our loss and, in fact, subsidize the, the rest of the district. And hopefully, that'll be a good thing over the next, you know, ten or fifteen years for, for the school district. How it will increase enrollment, we don't know. But, you know, they've predicted, you know, several thousand new employees. And that'll play out somehow in, in what that means for us. That is all working into the analysis and review that the administration is doing relative to how many staff do we need? Where do we need them? And, and what does it mean for our programs for basically the next decade? And those are the things that need to be worked out, you know, this year, next year, and the following year. But I'm, I'm, next year is, is, right now, is financially difficult. But the future is actually quite bright for Boston Spa because of that plant, for no other reason. So that's, that's important news. So the next meeting is April tenth. The, the state budget is due April first, and that'll be critical. My, the things that I've heard is that they, they do not expect to have the budget on time. That's not good. If they have it by the tenth, you know, if it comes in on the ninth or something, it'll be very difficult to incorporate that in, or we will try. I'm hearing the fifteenth, which means it will be before the next meeting of the, the, the following meeting, which is the seventeenth. But it'll give us very little time to incorporate that into what we're doing. But it will clearly be the rest of the expenses regardless and revenue updates if we have them. So that's, the next two meetings are going to be critical, and we'll see how it plays out. Any questions? Okay, thank you. Oh, yes.
So with the, the new pilot for the new building, do we anticipate it would be a jump up to some number and then the gradual decrease?
It'll be the same thing. The, exactly. The formula is, is the same. It's already built into the pilot agreement from, you know, back in 2010, 2008, I think it was signed. So it, it's set, we, you know, depending on how mu, how quickly they construct it, it'll, it'll have a number associated to it. And then that'll, that, as you said, as it gets, it'll hit maximum assessment, and then it has a roll-off over a certain period of time. So we'll see the same thing. But, I mean, we're way out on this. And, you know, this one, this, the current one will, will level on 2028 and will then start to go up itself also. It'll go up again, because now it will no longer have this built-in depreciation on the value of the building. That's what's been happening over the last fifteen years. And then, and then it'll grow, grow with our tax rate. So that's good news, too. All right, so the two of them will kind of, kind of interplay, and, and it'll be very unpredictable, but we'll, we'll do our best to deal with it, yes.
Just a question on the life cycle of a bus. Could you, how long do we typically?
Well, we, we try to replace the buses, you know, every ten years. But it depends. It's interesting, because the, the COVID pandemic, and we had a year where, you know, normally, we drive over nine hundred thousand miles with our buses. That one was less than, I think, five fifty or something. And the following year was less also. So it actually kind of saved us some mileage on the buses. But mileage isn't really the, the thing that is the, the greatest dictator of the buses. It's really rust. And, and that's, it's just, it's unbelievable. It is a very large vehicle with a lot of metal, and they rust. And where, where the rust would be acceptable on, on a personal passenger car, you know, it, it's, it's something that is, you know, let's say cosmetic. In this case, it involves the undercarriage of the bus, the structural integrity, and of course, all the parts, including the brakes. And they won't pass the constant inspections. So unlike, you know, your normal car, these buses are regularly inspected by the DOT, who actually comes to our garage, puts them up on the lift, goes through them, and does all this. And it gets to a point where the bus is not viable to spend the money to do the repairs relative to that. So that's, obviously, mileage plays into that, but time does too. And, and it's a concern that actually has come up with the electric buses, that, you know, these things are going to be rusting underneath, and what are they going to do? And maybe that's why they're so much more expensive. What are they going to do to prevent that underneath where these, the batteries will be? They're basically exposed. I mean, the bottom of the buses are exposed right now, and, and maybe there's a different design. I, I don't know. Okay? Okay? Yes?
To kind of follow up on that buzz question. So if we do start to buy electric buses next year, obviously, we got to buy some infrastructure to charge them. Is that, do we have space currently at the transportation facility to start, to put that in if we have to buy two or three or whatever?
To buy a small number, we certainly do. Okay? When we have to go to the full fleet, that's going to become a whole nother animal. So you'll have to in the, in the, in the lot there. You know, right now, we have the electrical supply there to provide bus heaters for the engine heater, block heaters. That won't be sufficient for level three or level two, you know, battery chargers. So there'll be a lot of change there. And there's a whole bunch of issues. So, so for example, although it's not a part of law or any kind of like national code, because there really isn't a consistent code yet on, on this, and it's some of the stuff that we've been attending these conferences on and seminars. But insurance companies are suggesting instead that you want to park these things ten feet apart, because if one starts on fire, then you don't take out your whole, your whole fleet. Well, if we have to separate them by ten or fifteen feet, we'll need more space than our lot. And we're not alone. Every school district will face this type of thing with, with, do you have enough? And, and if you have to buy more buses because the range is so limited that you need extra buses on hand, now you need more space in your lot. So this thing just cascades on and on. And it's, you know, it is problematic, and we'll just see how it plays out. You know, the, the second round, the thing that we learned, and I think this is actually the case in my own research, the second round of really good batteries, these solid-state batteries, are really going to be kind of commercially viable and manufacturable in 2030. It sure would be great if we could wait till 2030 to do this, because the cost will be down, the range will be greater, it won't be first generation, you know, technology that we're dealing with now. You know, I'm sure everyone saw the article on Bethlehem where they have seven of these and five are in, in repair, and they had two available on the day of this, this review because there's just issues. It's, it's, it's like buying something that never existed before. And why, you know, to force us to do this is, is, in my opinion, you know, problematic and not wise.
Would the infrastructure, you know, to add a couple stations for the, say, we have to buy two or three buses next year, would that be part of the proposition to buy the buses?
No, it would have to be separate because it's a, it's a, so the buses that we receive, by the way, we get aid sixty-four, sixty-five percent, sixty-four point nine percent is aided. So that's great news. So we don't really pay for all that. And that would help with the other, the other buses, but it'll be just that much more, double the price. But when you do physical infrastructure, that's a capital project. So that's like, you know, our building projects and things, like, like the lifts, that's a capital project. We get seventy-five percent aid on that. Okay? This district. So seventy-five percent, so, you know, out of this thing, you know, we won't be actually even, you know, having to make payments on the bus lifts until 2026. And then it will be paid at, you know, seventy-five percent. The, so when we start adding those, those items, either they'll be a part of a project, you know, we have those capital outlay projects, that's aided the same way. And we could, in, in, within the, the budget, actually, put a capital outlay to add a few of these chargers.
Okay.
And we would apply for the, the associated grants, et cetera, that, which brings down the cost right now. And since you only have a couple of this, these, you don't, you, this isn't a huge thing. In fact, one of the issues is, what is the power at the street? And right now, we're getting that analyzed by, every school district in the state is getting that analyzed by, you know, National Grid or their associated provider. But right now, we already have a four hundred, or four eighty vote, four hundred and eighty vote, vote transformer at the front of our garage. That's unusual. Usually, it's two twenty or two oh eight or in that range. And so we're kind of already set to, you know, start adding some of this stuff. How much capacity is left in that transformer is one of the analysis that has to be done. Every, again, every school district is doing that to see what they have. And then there's the capacity of what's coming in from, from on the lines. So we'll be doing all that. There's a report due by this school district and every school district on August first about where we are in the process of moving forward with this.
Okay.
Okay? So, so again, that's just a report that we're doing, and it doesn't commit us to anything at this point.
Thank you.
Yes, Holly?
I applaud you for being cautious on adopting the electric buses. I was a big proponent of one. We actually own one in my home that I cannot park in the garage right now because of the fire hazard that the battery is currently. But I also, at my job, have an electric trolley that I took oversight on in August, and it has been out three times for lengthy repairs, just because the technology isn't there yet.
It's new.
It's just not there yet.
We understand that. And that's, and the, the folks that are designing this and building this, this is great, but, you know, you, you hate to be the, you know, the first people on the, on the road here because it's just going to be problematic. There's no doubt.
Yeah, well, all of our technicians will, will have to be trained, or retrained, rather,
to deal with this. I mean, it's basically electrician stuff versus mechanical stuff. I don't know if you saw that.
We could probably speak for hours and days about very many different issues with the electric buses. And I think potentially, as we get a better gauge for what the, you know, direction from the state may play out, we potentially will have a meeting to, to discuss this at length. But, you know, there's a lot, and there's a lot between the concept of experimenting with a few versus the entire fleet. And, you know, those are completely different things. And as Brian says, every single school district is trying to look into it right now and have any discussions. So I'm not sure how far we want to keep going with this.
Any questions not involving electric buses?
I just have, I just have one.
Good. Oh.
In terms of pilot for the Global Foundries and then one for the new construction, the new construction will fall under the terms of the original one.
Yes.
Which was written on that day. And that was, it was crafted by agglomeration of like local government and state government officials with Global Foundries.
There, there weren't.
It wasn't necessarily a school district that actually had an active role in that?
Well, it, it did, because ultimately, the school districts, it was both Stillwater and Boston Spa had to approve it and were at the table in the sense. There weren't really any state officials at this. This was more the Saratoga IDA and, and the school districts and the, and the town, specifically Malta, rather.
Like the local.
Yeah. Yeah. So what it did is, it, it's actually written in a way that anticipates a second plant and says, any future plant will be based on these schedules, blah, 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 and goes on and deals with it. Deals, and it, it's not just plants, but offices and other ancillary buildings.
There doesn't need to be a timeframe for a negotiation to get this draft that just actually kind of slips under the district.
Yes, yes, we hope that that's the case. There, there could be an issue where if Global decides that they're not, you know, happy with the way, with the dollar figures that are in there, they could challenge it. In fact, maybe the, the town could challenge it. But I, I don't see that right now.
That concludes our report.
Okay. Thank you. Committee reports? We have committee reports tonight, correspondence to the district.
We had eight total this timeframe, three phone calls regarding student matters, five emails, two regarding transportation, two regarding the solar eclipse, and one regarding student matter.
Thank you. We have correspondence to the board since the last meeting. Announcements, Mr. Williams?
Thank you. I think everybody covered my announcements already, so, sorry. The, but just to remind you, Beauty and the Beast this weekend, five performances. The Parents' Partner webinar series does continue tomorrow night, so that was mentioned earlier. So session ten is tomorrow night. It's the one that's on focusing on knowing and communicating feelings and needs. So that'll be available, it's a Zoom meeting at six thirty tomorrow night. So if you're not at Beauty and the Beast, you can be watching this webinar. The robotics team is headed to the regional tournament Friday and Saturday. They'll be down at the, whatever we're calling it now, MVP Arena. It's been several things. And the kids, obviously, they go down on Thursday, they get it all set up and ready to go. And then the competitions, you're welcome to go see it. It's free, it's open to the public pretty much all day Friday and Saturday. The schedule will be out on Friday, and we'll shoot it out and, or post it wherever we can. And there's usually a live feed, so you can actually watch it. As long as you can understand what's happening, then you can, you can see what they're doing with this year's, their robots. So they're very excited about that. Then you heard reference to the spring recess, which is March twenty-ninth through April fifth, and classes resume on the eighth, and your next meeting's on the tenth.
Thank you, Stuart. Any announcements from our liaisons? Any old business? Okay, moving on to new business. I have a motion to approve resolution number four four three, adoption of the 2024-2025 district calendar.
Second?
Any discussion? Mr. Ryan?
Yeah, I was looking at the, at the calendar and counting days, and I did notice that January twenty-ninth is a new school holiday with the Asian Lunar New Year, which I thought was, didn't occur to me that we had that. And I so Googled and figured out that was just on into law last fall. And it didn't affect this school year because it happened to fall on a Saturday. I do see that we're at a hundred and eighty-two days for this versus this current school year, we're at one eighty-three. So by having that in there, does that affect how the school district can set up the calendar? Is it another constraint from the state for building in and giving the hundred and eighty days?
So it doesn't really affect the, the building of it. It, it just allow, it, it, you know, it's another day that we have to factor in when we're building it out. So, you know, it does, it does present a challenge as far as, you know, if we wanted to do a superintendent's conference day, or if there's some other days worked in. But we're, we're, we're able to come up with this schedule, excuse me, calendar, to factor in the Asian Lunar New Year along with some other days. And we still, we still are at a hundred and eighty-five total days with three, built-in three superintendent conference days. So not so much next year.
Gotcha. Okay. And I just see we do have kind of an extended December recess because of the way the calendar runs.
Yeah, we did the additional two days for the two complete weeks. And I think it happens once every seven years or so, so.
Okay.
Worked that in.
All right. And I guess just kind of my other thought with, with, with this is, I asked Dr. Dik to let me know what was the statistics for Asian population within the district. It's about two percent, and New York State's about eleven percent. And I, and we have not received any specific requests for, hey, can we include Lunar New Year when you build the calendar because of district partners? The other thing is, just kind of looking, I know other school districts do incorporate Jewish holidays, and New York State is roughly, coincidentally, about eleven percent Jewish as well. So the state is kind of picking and choosing, and I really don't care either way. My bigger thing is the mandate that is coming down, and I would rather see that the local school districts get to choose what their demographics and what they need to offer. So it kind of dovetails into what we talked about last fall with NISBA and their legislative advocacy. So I'm kind of putting this as a, as a one item, item that we would present to NISBA to say, hey, can we advocate? And this is going to be kind of an uphill climb that's already written into law, but to back this one out, if, if, so, but any future ones, we really want to make sure that locals, school districts have more of a choice versus a statewide mandate because the demographics are different everywhere. So just wanted to bring that up. Thank you. Any, I don't know if there's any comments from my quarters.
I, I guess I'm, I guess I'm wondering what you're, I guess, really asking for here? And it sounds like that you think that potentially there's some sort of threshold or criteria for a recognition?
I, I don't know what criteria the state is using to decide that. I view this as where I kind of, I mean, it is what it is, but where I'm kind of looking for the future is putting on the NISBA's advocacy that the state does not mandate any other future school holidays without, I would say, at least consideration amongst the superintendents or, or NISBA, because it just, one constrains the school districts to try to fit the one eighty days in. And obviously, we want the instruction days, but also have more local control than the state mandating what to do. Because one can make the argument, there's a large percentage of Irish Americans, and we don't think St. Patrick's Day off. And I'm not saying we should, but I'm just saying there's all these things coming into play that it should be, you know, I was just surprised that this was actually put into law when, when I started researching it, so. So if you're asking, what they, they ask is, is to consider over the summer or wherever, wherever we're going to convene about any legislative activities that we want to do, that this be one of the topics. Something to think about.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
I, I mean, I, I have to think about what you just said. I'm, I'm not sure. I'll have to go back and listen again. I'm not sure. Are you advocating against the lunar holiday because we don't have enough, you know, people in our community who would celebrate it? That's what I'm kind of confused about.
I'm, I'm not for or against the lunar holiday.
Okay.
Or Jewish holidays or anything else. I'd like the, the option for the state to say to school districts, if you feel that this is an important part of your community, that you can set up your calendar as such. I know, like I said, other school districts set that up for, for Jewish holidays because they have a larger Jewish population within their school district.
Right.
I'm not happy that, and New York State doesn't have to be hap, make me happy, right? But that they, you know, mandate, mandated that regardless, you, you must do this. So I'm.
More of a local choice?
We have a more of a local choice, yes. And I know their, their, their premise was coming from a, a, a good point of inclusion and learning about another culture. I just don't know, you know, I'd rather take, put the kids in school, and let's do something to learn about that day and what it is versus, you know, you know, take some time out of the instruction day to do that versus it being a school day off.
Well, you could have the same argument for President's Day, Martin Luther King, you know, we have all of those days off. But you could, I mean, you know, I'm not, I'm not saying you're wrong, but I'm saying if we're going to take learning opportunities, we should also take, you should also, you should have those to the, that list, too, because those are learning opportunities for students as well.
I also, I mean, other arguments, even when researchers and superintendents had, you know, difficulty in how do I incorporate this additional school holiday with keeping the one eighty and knowing that we're going to have, you know, snow days and that type of thing? So, I mean, the other argument could be like, okay, well, yeah, it's fine, we'll do another school holiday, but now allow us to, to go down to one seventy-nine or one seventy-eight. Not that I'm proponent of that, because we do want more kids in, in the classroom, you know.
I'm just wondering how Shen does it with the Jewish holidays and adding this holiday?
They go a hundred and eighty-seven days. That's how.
Does that?
They go a hundred and eighty-seven days.
Okay.
On their school calendar.
So they make it happen.
They go to school a lot more days than, they don't get the day before Thanksgiving. You know, that, you know, certain school districts just make sacrifices for their communities. Like, you know, so you get a Jewish holiday off at Shen or, you know, another school district, and you don't get the day before Thanksgiving. Or you don't get the January second and third of the two-week Christmas break that Boston Spa is getting. So there are ways to fit it in. It is, it is difficult, though. I, I agree with you. I think that, you know, putting in all these holidays between Labor Day and June thirtieth is, is challenging. I'm not sure going after cultural, like, you know, advocating against cultural days is some, is a, is a.
I don't think that's, I don't, I didn't interpret it him that way.
Well.
Yes.
That's how, that's how I'm, I'm seeing it like you're, you're, you know, you're saying, that's, that's why I said I want to take a minute.
So if, if the governor had said St. Patrick's Day should be a, a school holiday, I would still say I would not want that mandated.
Right. But what I'm saying is, like, you know, President's Day where we celebrate the presidents could be a day where we could be in school learning about the presidents, you know? But and Martin Luther King Day could be a day where we're in school learning about Martin Luther King. You know, we have these days off built into, you know, Veterans Day, things like that, you know? These are days where we have days off and have for a long time, Columbus Day or Indonesians' Day. And where we could be in school learning, cultural days, I'm not sure if that's a advocacy route I personally am willing to, you know.
Okay. We can just, I mean.
And I, I think we've, we've spoken a little bit about this before in terms of kind of what should a district's role be and what should a district be advocating for. I, I think the logical extension of this is that for us to offer ourselves up for having the option of kind of ranking or prioritizing certain cultural groups or other groups, et cetera, et cetera, it's just a very difficult thing, I think, for us to, to approach. And, you know, there's discussion about, oh, well, we don't have local choice. there are in the United States and the world, less than half a percent of people who can't see at all. The American Disabilities Act in nineteen ninety said that this building, many other buildings, are going to have signage that has Braille on it. There's expense to that, there's a cost on that, there's a mandate coming down. Sort of advocating that for every single one of these things, we're going to try and have a position on or advocate a position for them. I, I think, again, I'm just not sure that's, that's someplace that we want to go. I'm just not sure I see the, the upside to that.
Well, I mean, first of all, I did not say anything about the, the district taking a position about any specific group, ethnic or otherwise. I was talking about the state mandating something without local control of it. And the, and the signage has kind of really taken that argument, because, I mean, one could say to the school district, how many days we have to try to fit in? That is. That is our job to try to figure that out. Signage is not really our job, so.
Well, you're talking about things that aren't necessarily in our control. And there are hundreds and thousands of them that are not in our control. And again, sort of saying, well, we're going to pick and choose which ones that we want to have a position on, have some sort of public position on, put time and energy and effort into, et cetera. I, I, I just, I, I struggle with, again, trying to, to figure out what the important or what, what we, we would or shouldn't and, and how we justify that.
Yeah, I guess I just want to say, I mean, I think there are good arguments on, it's a complicated set of questions. For me, and this is outside the scope of adopting the district calendar. For me, the criteria for when we as a board would decide to go to, to the national, or to the state organization and advocate would be if we knew that this was very foreseeably going to have a, a significant negative impact on the students in our district, right? For me, that would be the place where I would feel like as a board, that's part of our job is to protect the interests of our students. I, I don't see this calendar issue as meeting that threshold for me. I know we had discussions last year about other issues and other advocacies. So I guess for me, as a board member, the threshold would be I can immediately foresee a significant negative impact on students in our district. And again, I just wouldn't see this particular issue as meeting that threshold. Because again, you know, we're making the calendar work and we've got, you know, not a huge amount of wiggle room, but we've, we've got some choices and, and we're making this work, so.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Not hearing any. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Resolution number 443 passes. I have a motion to approve resolution number 444, Board of Education Policy Manual File 7351, limited authorized use of physical restraints.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Not hearing any. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Resolution number 444 passes. I have a motion to approve resolution number 445, Board of Education Policy Manual File 7619, Time Out Rooms.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Not hearing any. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Resolution number 445 passes. I have a motion to approve resolution number 446, Board of Education Policy Manual File 6123, Workplace Violence Prevention.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Not hearing any. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Resolution number 446 passes. I have a motion to approve resolution number 447, Board of Education Policy Manual File 8330, Objection to Instructional and Library Materials.
So moved.
Second.
I have discussion, so I know there's discussion. Any discussion? Who, who would like to start?
Go ahead, Jason.
Okay. So the current policy talks about instructional materials, library materials, a couple other things. And then it goes into great length about objections to instructional materials. And there's actually a section on if you want to formally object to instructional materials, how do you do that? Et cetera, et cetera. It's not really anything about library materials. The new version has language that says that the policy and definitions applied both instructional material and library material. I am still finding that there is a deficit, there's a gap in how instructional materials are to be handled in terms of an objection. So it goes right into Boston Spa School Library Vision, Vision, objectives, acquisitions, bunch of stuff on library materials, de-selection procedures, and then the objection to library materials. But again, I, I don't see anything that handles the instructional material. And I, I kind of think that the policy should cover both of those and should have more detail on the process for objecting to instructional material. That's what I.
One question would be, do we have the same process exactly for instructional materials and library materials? Or that, or is there a separate process? But either way, I think it just needs to be more clearly written. The other question or concern I had about the policy was on page four. It says that the complainant is required to complete and submit the reconsideration form within five working days. But it's not clear within five working days of what, right? Are they providing notice to the school district that they're going to be objecting to the material? Is it within the first five days of raising the objections? So again, the, the process of like what, what that, like what kicks off that five-day deadline isn't clear to me as written. And, and I would suggest that we really need to get some clarity on that because there's language later that says, you know, if it hasn't been completed in five days, you know, then the, the clock has run out. And so I think we really need to be pretty airtight on that. The other point I would have, and again, this is really, I think, more just a clarity of the writing, is that I think points four and five should be reversed in that section, the formal request for objection. So the decision should be made at the board meeting, should come after the, the appeal of the decision, right? So the, the committee decides, that's communicated to the superintendent, the superintendent reviews it, and then it can go to the board if I'm understanding that process correctly. But again, as, as written, I, it was not clear to me in reading it multiple times what that timeline was or what that sort of succession was. Other than that, I, I like the, the, I think the clarity of the roles and responsibility of the role, of the review committee, I thought was, brought some just clarity to that process. So I, you know, applaud the labor and work that went into this.
Other discussion?
Yes. First, thank you. You picked up some things I, I didn't quite get, so I think that was very good points. A couple of things for me, you know, on page one, right after the definitions, it just looks like there's a header missing as to what the next section is. So just kind of a clerical thing there. And I guess kind of take a step back, was there any specific initiative that sparked the update to this procedure? Was it only one recommendation or change of state law or we just felt this needed to be updated?
So on, on the recommendation of our attorneys, the goal is to try to combine the process for objection to library materials and instructional materials in one comprehensive policy. With the, you know, so it existed as a procedure, so we wanted to be transparent to show exactly what the procedure was for appeal. And having, you know, the appendix here as well with, you know, the library bill of rights and then appendix two, the actual request for reconsideration form. Have that right up in our policy so that everybody can see, you know, what the, the overall procedure is if you're going to object to either a library material or instructional material. It's a more comprehensive policy than what we had. It was, it was just lacking.
Gotcha, okay. I did know on, on the original one, at the very end, you know, before it refers you to also policy 8320, it listed education law and a bunch of other education laws. And I didn't see that in the revised one, so I don't know if that was just a omission accidentally or if this policy doesn't cover those educational laws now. So just make you aware of that. And I did like some language. We were talking about de-selection when, hey, you know, resource is no longer needed and the library meeting specialist, you know, obviously determines, determines that. And then the remove from resource and the reconsideration process. Nowhere in here is the word banned, which I think is nice. We're, we're having a, a discussion of appropriateness of materials in a school library. But one thing that I did see, which was on page six, for talking about the committee, review committee that is formed to review a resource, I like that the, there's roles. The review committee members are anonymous. I agree with that. I agree with that during our previous discussion on this topic. But it does say that when the committee decides and votes on the resource, it says this will be a secret ballot vote, and I guess I would disagree with that. If I'm a board member and I'm reviewing this, I would like to know how did the parent vote versus how did the administrator vote versus how did the student vote? So I would strike that one sentence, this will be a secret ballot vote.
I disagree with that.
That sounds like something we would need legal counsel on. And I'm not sure that I could have an informed opinion on it until we got some legal guidance on that.
Okay.
I mean, as a member of the policy committee, I disagree with that. I don't think that, you know, if it were to ever get leaked of who the parent or the student was, I would never want their vote to be known to the public. You know, if, if gossip were to get out into the community of who was on that committee, I would never want, especially the student, their vote to be known to the public, one way or another.
Not say to the public, but to, for the, if the board is going to, if this gets appealed to the board, the board should be aware of what role voted. I'm not saying the public should be aware. The public is going to be aware of the, the result of the review committee.
Why does it matter?
Because if you have a five-person committee, three of them are district employees, one's a parent and one's a student, and the vote is three to two, where the, to me, that, that speaks a little bit about maybe some biases in, in the, in the committee.
Don't you think that you would? Okay. That would draw my statement.
I mean, I, I would agree that, that that's a, a point where we would want some legal counsel on. I will say that I think a ballot where people's, a secret ballot is kind of a cornerstone of democracy, right? And so what we're talking about is getting community review of materials. So to me, having the ballots be, you know, secret goes along with getting, being able to really get people's full and fair. It may be that an administrator on that review committee feels some pressure to vote a certain way, perceived or not. But a secret ballot really preserves the opportunity for people to actually really give their full input on that. So I would feel as a board member, that's, who voted what is not as important to me as the act, as the, the count of the vote when I'm reviewing that. Because again, my assumption is that being able to post a ballot in secret gives everybody the maximum chance of giving their, their true and honest unbiased vote. So just my two cents.
I would just, one thing is, do we do a secret ballot vote for any other committee in the district? And if we, so.
Well, I don't know of any other anonymous committees in the district.
Okay.
Do we have any other anonymous committees in the district?
No, I don't know.
Okay.
I mean, these, the parent and the student are, you know, putting themselves out there. Especially when it's a controversial book, the topic, and.
And you might have a hard time getting people on the committee if it's not a secret ballot. Because they might feel pressure, they might feel antagonized after fact, after their, whatever their vote is, so I.
Well, I mean, the committee itself is still anonymous. I mean, the book review we had last year, the board does not know who was on that committee. Still don't, so.
Okay. So policy 1410, our policy on policies, says that our options are, or the process is that we have our first and second reading. It says that policy draft may be amended at the second meeting. I think meaning that it gets approved to sit for the 28 days. During that 28-day period, I don't know, the policy committee might revisit what they want to do with it. And then potentially an amended version could be shared at the second reading. So our options are to vote down this resolution, to approve, to, to put it up for the, the first read. I guess everyone could abstain, which I believe would also not approve it. Or we could approve it and go with the policy language about that it may be amended at the second meeting. And I, I don't have a full understanding of which may be the most preferable path forward. Is there any guidance from the clerk?
No, I mean, you summarized it. You know, there isn't, there isn't a requirement that you approve it at the second meeting either. So you could amend it, have the policy committee meet and propose amendments and bring back a revised version that would then be discussed. And you don't need to approve it then, you could still go on and keep, you know, doing this for 28-day periods.
So just of note, our policy committee does meet again April 10th, which will be in the window.
Okay. So I think I would offer my opinion as the board member that we let the policy committee start again with this at the April 10th meeting. So I would, I'm going to vote in a manner that will let them start fresh with it at the April 10th meeting.
And just to clarify, that could be an abstain vote, basically books it back to the policy committee? Is that accurate or I'm just, again, trying to.
Unless it has a majority of votes that approve it, it will not be approved.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I don't understand why we can't table it and let us, let the policy committee work on it.
I don't think we can table it because we've had a motion to vote on it. I think since we've had a motion to vote on it, we need to vote on it. If we were going to table it, we could have done it before. That's what we've done in prior meetings is before the motion's been made or the motion has actually been to table it. I don't know. We have a, any better guidance than that? But like I said, we made a motion to vote on it.
So I understand we have to vote because we've got that motion in progress. The choices are to vote to approve, to vote to not approve, or to vote to abstain. Is that accurate?
That is accurate. Those are your options.
Okay, so approve depend, or, or not approve, then?
It would only be approved if a majority of the members voted to approve it.
Right, and if it is not approved, sorry.
You can't table it, so there is no vote of tableing it like Katie did.
Like I said, I don't think we can because we already have a motion on the floor.
Alright.
To vote on the resolution.
Alright.
To clarify, if we abstain, the policy committee can work on it until the 10th, at our meeting on the 10th. And we can revisit this on the 10th.
Absolutely. If, if we all abstain or a majority abstains, it will not approve. The, the first read 28-day waiting period will not be approved.
And we can work on it on the 10th and then the 28, that's not 28 days till the 10th. So then we'll have time to present it on the 10th and then as old business. And then be able to vote on it, on the, in the 28-day period, whatever meeting that is, the next meeting after that. Correct?
Because we have one on the 17th.
Well, I think as a practical matter, it would be hard for the committee. Well, I think as a practical matter, it would be hard for the committee to do its work and get a written policy for a resolution vote that night. I mean, maybe you think you can. At some point, it would come up for a first read, which would start the twenty-eight day clock, and that would be one of our upcoming meetings.
Okay.
But as an example, if we abstained, had the policy committee meeting on the tenth, came up with a written policy to share prior to the seventeenth, where people would have enough time to review it, a week to review it, then we could conceivably still vote on the seventeenth with the amended, amended policy.
As a first, as a first read, right? And then that would do the twenty-eight days, yes. That makes sense?
Uh, no, I think what Holly's saying, and I think what our policy fourteen, ten says, is that we can vote to approve it, the, the motion that's on the floor, the resolution that's on the floor, we could vote to approve that, which is that it would be sitting for the twenty-eight day period. Policy fourteen says that within that twenty-eight day period, or at the second reading vote, which would be then the twenty-eight days from tonight, an amended version can be presented, in which case, and I think that was where I started out with this, is we could vote to approve this, we would then say that we would have an amended version and decide at the meeting on the seventeenth if we were going to vote to approve that amended version, or we still didn't like that amended version, and we could vote down that second vote there.
All right.
That makes sense, too.
The fastest way to fast track it would still be to approve this tonight.
Okay.
Okay.
So helpful, thank you.
Those are our options. All right, so, motion, so we made the motion, we seconded, we've had our discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay. Abstentions? So, I believe we have an approval. Resolution number four, four, seven is approved. I have a motion to approve resolution number four, four, eight, appointment of chairperson, chief inspectors, and election inspectors.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Not hearing any. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Resolution number four, four, eight passes. I have a motion to approve resolution number four, four, nine, state environmental quality review.
Second.
Any discussion? Not hearing any. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Resolution number four, four, nine passes. And, just a point of information, the next two resolutions, we're going to have to do a roll call vote on. Resolution number four, fifty, purchase of school vehicles bond proposition.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Not hearing any. I will start the roll. Mr. Ryan?
Aye.
Mr. Jerry?
Aye.
Ms. Barker Flynn?
Aye.
Doctor?
Uh, aye.
Ms. Woodmore?
Aye.
I vote aye. Resolution number four, fifty passes. I have a motion to approve resolution number four, fifty-one, bus lift replacement proposition.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Not hearing any. I'll start the roll call. Mr. Ryan?
Aye.
Aye there. Ms. Parker Flynn?
Aye.
Aye.
And I vote aye. Resolution number four, fifty-one passes. I have a motion to approve resolution number four, fifty-two, Boston Spa Public Library proposition.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Not hearing any. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Resolution number four, fifty-two passes. I have a motion to approve resolution number four, fifty-three, agreement professional services.
Second.
Any discussion? Not hearing any. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Resolution number four, fifty-three passes. I have a motion to approve resolution number four, fifty-four, agreement professional services.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Not hearing any. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Resolution number four, fifty-four passes. I have a motion to approve resolution number four, fifty-five, award of bid, safety and security film.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Not hearing any. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Resolution number four, fifty-five passes. I have a motion to approve resolution number four, fifty-six, placement of students with disabilities.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Not hearing any. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Resolution number four, fifty-six passes. I have a motion to approve resolution number four, fifty-seven, placement of preschool students with disabilities.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Not hearing any. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Resolution number four, fifty-seven passes. Resolutions number four, fifty-eight through four, sixty-five are recognized as a consent agenda for the purpose of Board of Education action. I have a motion to approve the consent agenda, resolutions number four, fifty-eight through four, sixty-five.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Not hearing any. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Resolution number four, fifty-eight through four, sixty-five passes. Are there any appointments to recognize? Anyone in attendance? Any other new business? I just have one thing. I handed out a flyer everyone should have. There's an event that the Wish We BOCs is hosting, a women in trades event, Wednesday, March twenty-seventh, and we will have some members of our administration attending, I will be attending, and I just, for your consideration, any other board members who want to attend, you can register online or use the fancy QR code that's here for a quick five field registration for it, just so they have an idea about how many people go. But, you know, it's really a great event. The BOCs Women in Trades Program is something that is incredibly valuable to the thirty-one component school districts in the BOCs. Our own district has its own technical education programs, and I think that potentially there could be some synergies and some integration and some things to learn from how the BOCs is also approaching that, and what the community partners have to share in terms of the community partner efforts to do that. So, if anyone is available, I just leave that for your consideration. Okay. We are now at the second time in our agenda for public comment. Do we have anyone signed up? We do not. Our association, Ms. McGowan, who's left, any other PTAs? No?
No, but in Tim's absence, I just wanted to thank all of the PTAs for organizing a joint transportation appreciation luncheon for next Tuesday. We have all realized how vital that team is to our entire community, so thank you to the PTAs for the hard work in organizing that.
Thank you, absolutely. All right. We are time for adjournment. We do have reason to go into executive session. Oh, I'm sorry, law?
Just a couple of quick things.
Yep.
One, the BACC has an open gym this Friday, just to make the community aware, it's from six to eight P.M., free for all ages, no cost. About twelve and hundred, does require, you know, adult supervision, so come on and have some fun there. And, just something, if, you know, if you're a parent of a certain age, older student, maybe just graduated, you remember the box tops for education where you would cut them out and some loyal PTA volunteer would paste it onto a sheet of paper and mail it in, and the school district would get some free money. So, they've actually, they've gone digital, and I'm sure people are aware of this, but just as a refresher to make people aware of it, it's an app, very easy. You come home from the grocery store with your receipt, even if it's one of those big long receipts, you just take a couple pictures and it finds the things for you, automatically applies. So, middle school has got fifty-eight dollars and forty cents for the school year out of a thousand, so, and this is, anyone can do this, you know, sign up for the, in your Boston Spa schools, the elementary or the middle, and just within two weeks of coming home from the grocery store, snap picture of your receipt. Grandparents can do this, everyone can do this, and it's free money, so, so always just trying to remember when you get home to do it, so, do it in the car. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. I need a motion to adjourn to executive session to discuss the employment of a particular person and to discuss a particular student matter protected by federal law.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? We are adjourned.